For August 11th, 2014. We have the go call.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Proton Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoder?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington? Councilmember Teetz?
I believe Councilman Pennington is on the way. And Councilman Teetz will not be here this evening. And we'll take care of that at regular session at 7:30. We have one discussion item this evening. C1 is the Volunteer Firefighter Incentive Plan. And as we all know, this is a study session. We will not be voting on this item, but we will try to give direction to C administration this evening. So having said that, I'll turn the table over to City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's our pleasure to be here after about a year and a half of meetings and discussions with the Volunteer Fire Incentive Plan representatives, who a few of them are here today. And we've been meeting over the past year and a half, but I want to take you back and not go through the whole year and a half, although we could. But since time is of the essence, I want to just give you a brief summary of sort of what the whole process was like and what we were attempting to do. And so, but some, a few of the station reps on the plan are here. Why don't you introduce yourself, Mr. Soriano?
Sure. Al Soriano, on to Station 3.
Pete Hollinger, Station 6.
Tony Paving, Station 4.
Joel Barco, Station number 2.
Okay. And so, we met with what each station of all the six stations has in mind. And for the longest time, Mr. Darling and I were meeting with them. And then Attorney Bloom was there with Mr. Van Overbeek. And we had the, we had the auditor, not the auditor, the actuaries, thank you, in a couple of times to discuss all these issues that continue to come up. But let me just, with the six station reps and our management team and the attorneys and the professionals over the past year and a half, we had just a few objectives we were trying to meet. And so, I want to spell those out tonight. And the first was, we wanted to establish a trust for the funds to provide a safe and secure place for the funds to fund the Volunteer Firefighter Incentive Plan. We wanted to address the benefit multiplier because there hadn't been an increase in that benefit multiplier since 2009. We wanted to address the actuarial assumptions because there were a few issues that we encountered with our experience on the ERS Board, which is the Pension Fund for the City, Pension Board for the City, which Council or Mayor Proton Henderson is a part of, and update those assumptions. And we'll talk about those a little bit later. And then we wanted to figure out how, then we had to figure out how we were going to fund it, whatever those benefit increases were, whatever the actuarial assumptions did and impacted the actuarial, the ARC, so which is the required contribution, actuarial required contribution. So our objectives were basically to make this affordable and sustainable, but to make it safe and secure, provide a benefit increase, change assumptions to more adequately reflect today's assumptions, and then fund it. And that's what we presented to you in this whole presentation. And everybody's here except the actuaries to answer questions and are part of this presentation, but it's really been a team effort to bring it to this point. And as you opened and said, and I know there's, you know, some discussion whether this is, you know, this cake's already been baked, and it's, this is just a step in the process where we brought this to a point of much discussion, debate, and dialogue to achieve these assumptions. And so, that's where we come before you tonight. So here's the agenda. We're going to talk about the history of the Volunteer Fire Incentive Plan, the current platform, the proposed IRS Section 115 Trust, the current eligibility and membership, plan benefits, and the benefit multiplier considerations, the cost. And then, as our new approach is to show or to request the council directives, we have a few questions in the end to provide some direction, and there could be others as well. So the history, Chief Nelson's going to talk about the history of the plan and why it was created. Chief Nelson?
Plan was created in July of 1980. And those are the quotes right out of the resolution that council passed at that point in time. And it was basically to recognize the unique service that the volunteers provide and to provide an incentive that would keep that program rolling. Just to give you an idea of what's happened in the last 34 years, we think the plan has been pretty effective. We started out with 126 volunteer firefighters. Since that time, we've added a station. Currently, today, we're at 153 volunteer firefighters. While nationally, the number of volunteer firefighters is decreasing on an annual basis because of required training, family requirements, things like that, overall, we've probably lost a couple hundred thousand volunteer firefighters in the last 20 years nationally. The other thing about it is it has helped fire department because the fire department, we really don't have really good yardsticks to measure fire departments. One of the best that we've got and the only one we've got is the Insurance Services Office. They have a direct monetary interest in how well fire departments perform their job because basically they charge rates to you based on fire insurance, based on how well they think the fire department's going to do if you have a fire. Basically, in 1966, we were rated an ISO Class 7. Remember, ISO runs from 1 being the best to 10 being no fire protection at all. In 1986, we became a Class 4. And in 2002, we became a Class 3, which puts us in about the top 3% of all 30,000 fire departments in the United States. So we think the program has been pretty effective. Next. Just to give you an idea, in 1980, the initial benefit was $60 multiplied times the years of service prior to 123179, and $96 for the years of service after 1180. Eligibility was 10 years of service and age 60 if it was before that time, or 65 after that time. And at that time, retirement was tied together with incentive plan. They were literally married together. And later on, the program will explain why we separated those for other reasons. And at the time, we got 126 volunteer firefighters.
Current platform, and Mike and Lori are going to discuss this one.
Yes, and I'm going to start with this one, and I'm not going to read from the slide. But basically, I'm going to summarize and just say that under our current platform, there is a restricted ability for investment, and there's very little security with the current status. The, you know, restricted ability for investment, basically because we are limited in what types of investments can occur. And also, the very little security, basically it's subject to the city's creditors at any point in time.
My involvement, for those of you who've not met me, my name's Michael Van Overbeck. I was retained as Special League of Councilor Assistant developing this. My background is in public sector pension law and retiree healthcare plans. The question came up, you know, the Internal Revenue Code lacks a definitive structure for a volunteer incentive firefighter program. We can turn to the Internal Revenue Code and find a lot of different vehicles, but for this specific type plan, we really were limited. And so, we have proposed what's referred to as a 115 Trust. And 115 Trust is probably the most used vehicle today for retiree healthcare plans in the governmental sector. State of Michigan has gone to a 115 Trust. I think Oakland County finally switched their VIB over to a 115 Trust. So they're very popular for retiree healthcare plans. The advantage of the 115 Trust is first and foremost, we're worried about security. So this creates a trust where the assets are held separate from the assets of the city, so they're safe. Once those funds are contributed for the firefighters, they are protected, you can't come back out, and they're secure. As well as you have the ability to be funding in accordance with the actuarial assumptions, and so that will help make sure that the plan continues and the funded level improves. Lori makes a very good point. It will be segregated from the city's assets and held in a separate investment portfolio. Currently, you can only invest those assets in accordance with Public Act 20, which is the limitation on governmental funds as to where a governmental entity can invest their funds, unlike the retirement plan. This trust will allow the assets to be invested very similar to those of the retirement system. One of the reasons of the underfunding in this plan is you currently have a 6.5% assumed rate of investment return, meaning when the actuary does the report, they assume that monies in this trust will earn interest, you know, investment return at 6.5%, which has been very difficult to achieve in this fixed income environment we're in today. So this will allow the assets to be invested in stocks and expertise and fixed income type instruments like the employees' retirement system. And again, there's, one of the other big drains in the system as we went through this process was a realization that under the existing plan, the firefighters were allowed an option of taking a lump sum distribution and move the benefits over their lifetime. So there was a big drain on the trust. And so, this will help create, take away some of the incentives to do so, so that the plan will have the corpus of the trust to invest and get those long-range returns. A 115 Trust is a grantor trust. It's a revocative trust under Section 115 of the Internal Revenue Code. 115 is strictly available to governmental sectors. It's for an essential governmental function. So historically, healthcare benefits, right, the funding of your retiree healthcare promise is an essential governmental function. Here, you're funding for length of service incentives for volunteer firefighters, an essential governmental function. We talked about Public Act 314 is that statute that governs all public plans in the state of Michigan, retirements, as well as the healthcare plans, and will be used for this trust. One of the big concerns of the firefighters was to recognize that once they rendered this service, that there would be some protections to the benefits as they accrued. This trust will recognize these benefits as a contractual obligation such that they'll have those protections afforded under Article 9, Section 24 of the Constitution. That notwithstanding, City Council would still have the ability in the future if they felt this plan no longer met the needs of the volunteer firefighters, to amend the plan, to close the plan, much like the retirement benefits. You can't take away benefits as they've accrued, but if you want to change your plan for future accruals, you could certainly change the plan in the future, and the plan would allow you to amend it in the future. And then again, it requires mandatory investment consultants and managers to make sure that the assets of the plan are being invested in institutional quality type investments.
And you one of us can talk about this slide. The Board of Trustees is essentially almost identical to what we have for the employee retirement board. There is a retired representative, and these appointees are appointed by the Volunteer Incentive Committee, which is one station rep. That board will select the members for the firefighters. And then, of course, there's one City Council member. I know you'll be fighting over who's going to be taking that role on, but the good thing is, is that they are meeting only on a quarterly basis.
It is with any trust, right? You need a Board of Trustees or a trustee to administer the trust. They can only administer the trust consistent with the trust document. So although you have this separate board that's responsible as the investment fiduciary of the assets and to administer the benefits, they will not have the ability to change the benefit structure, to grant more benefits or any additional benefits under the trust other than as you have adopted through appropriate action of City Council. And then, we just did a quick slide here, pros and cons. You know, the pros, the 115 Trust provides safe, secure solvent platform for the volunteers, ability to diversify discourages lump sum. The cons are listed over here, quite frankly, depending on what side of the table you're sitting on, I would venture to say for many people, the cons are also pros, and which is why this worked, because it's a revocative trust. It does protect the assets from the creditors. In this day and age, we're always concerned about, you know, attorneys are always concerned about different types of liabilities that exist. So it's always nice to know that once assets are contributed, they can't be taken away. Be obligation to continue the funding to make sure that this plan is well-funded. And then, the con, once a member is in, he or she is always in meeting. Once they've accrued that service, they've always got that service. But again, if you chose at some point time to close the plan and not have future accruals and just vest people in their service, at that point, you'd have the ability.
And just the timeline, we provided that for you as well, because, you know, this is a little unique in that it's a volunteer plan. So we think it's a great idea to go to the IRS and to make sure that they have a review of it. So the proposed plan is to bring it to you, again, assuming that there is concurrence tonight to move forward. We would have it on the next agenda. And then, you would approve it, you would approve the trust, then it would be submitted to the IRS for their review. And then, once the IRS has signed off on it, then it would be completely funded. There may be some minimal funding ahead of that, just because you have to, you know, you can't have a hypothetical situation, the IRS would not rule on that. So that is our proposed timeline.
Currently, the eligibility to receive benefits are 30 years of service at any age, 25 years of service at age 50, and 10 years of service at age 55. We also have a provision that if you are vested former participant, where you put in at least 10 years and leave the department and don't come back, at that time, you can, your benefit would be calculated at age 60. It's not mandatory that members collect when they are eligible. We have, I think, almost 10 people that are way past the date when they were eligible to collect, and they've chosen not to do that. They want to just continue to either let the multiplier grow, let years of service grow, or for whatever reason, they've chosen not to do that. One of the things that we did experience when we started the lump sum is we had folks whose financial advisors told them that, well, the instant that you become eligible for this, you need to pull it all out of there, because if the multiplier went up $10 a year, the logic was is that, you know, you won't, you can make more with that money on your own than you can waiting another year and getting an extra $10 multiplier times another year of service. Follow me? So people were basically, the day that they became eligible, they were applying. Now, the problem was, and the dichotomy was, is that they wanted the money, but they didn't want to leave the fire department. Okay? Because we're looking at somebody that could be 48 years old. A lot of our young folks start at 18. And they're just getting into the groove. So basically, we actually created a classification of service called a post-incentive service, where we divorced collecting your incentive benefit from retirement from the fire department and made them two separate issues. So basically, today, you can take your incentive. However, if you choose to remain on the fire department, you can do that. We have a few requirements. Number one, you still have to make the training, you still have to make the run response, and you have to take physical. So we want to make sure that you're capable of doing this, because we are talking some cases of folks who are a little bit later in life. Go ahead, start this one. If I can, just to show from a financial standpoint, there is a history, this is the history of the years of service benefit multiplier. Again, as the chief mentioned, it started in the late 70s at about $60 per year of service. But what I'd like to point out here is, since 86, there is a history of increases in the multiplier, typically on an annual basis, until we get up to 2009. You can see from 2009 to 2014, it's been at $605 per year of service multiplier for, basically through our troubled times. 2014 is, what's the budget at? 642. And of course, that's part of our proposal. We're looking forward to moving that as part of our overall plan. Next, to show at a 642 year of service multiplier, what does that look like for somebody with 10 years to 30 years of service? And you can see it ranges between $6,000 and $19,000 per year. It's an annual benefit. Finally, again, I wanted to show how, again, from a financial standpoint, the year benefit multiplier versus the city's cost, obviously makes sense, right, are directly related, right? So as we can see, starting in 2009, when the multiplier was $605, you can see the cost went from 789 to about the 85 range. And it's kind of stayed there, again, from an actuary standpoint, through the years, went over $605. Again, we approved in the budget a multiplier of 642, and you can see that that increases the ARC to about $1,078,500. Now, as Mr. Kishnik alluded to earlier, mentioning is, is some of the assumptions that are used in, that are actuary uses in coming up with this required contribution of $1,078,500, we believe from a management standpoint that some of it is a little outdated. And there are new assumptions that the actuary can use to really kind of get us better funded towards the benefit that we think we're going to have to ultimately pay out. And one is, is the mortality tables that are currently using a 1983 mortality table. Those were revised, I believe the latest one is a 2000 table, which, as you can expect, has some longer life expectancies in there. This obviously increases the cost. One of the other assumptions that they were using is that there are no benefit increases. Okay? Well, as we can see from that history report, and we typically do give benefit increases. So if, you know, if the actuary starts to use, you know, what, some kind of percentage increase that we typically will do, will typically increase the cost, but then again, match what we're doing. And finally, it does use a 6.5% return on investment. Again, if we didn't move towards a trust, we, you know, I would be able to make that or be more aligned with what we can do as opposed to the fixed markets they are today. Again, it's a conservative estimate. Finally, as you're seeing with the relationship between the multiplier and the cost of the city, that's a significant assumptions that we have to consider in coming up with this multiplier. And through our committee with the volunteers, you know, we explored several different options, including, you know, firefighter compensation. The chief mentioned the ISO or the Insurance Service Office has some kind of, you know, ratios or equivalencies. We have DB plans and DC plans. So there are several different things that we went through to come up with something really that we thought as a group and got consensus in as a group, was something that was really right, rational, affordable, and recognizes truly the service that the volunteers provide to the city. So with that, we came with this proposed method of coming up with this multiplier. So on the left side, just to point out the really significant parts of coming up with this is obviously what is an annual wage. And so, that's about the annual wage of a technician right now. The next big factor is the DB pension factor. And right now, in this model, we're using a 2.5 pension factor, which is, as you can see, is somewhere in between a police at 2.8 and a career firefighter at 2.25. And then finally, the big thing to get to the 769 is the annual benefit, 50%. So you come with a 100%, would be about a $46,000 benefit, right? Half of that then is $23,000. To get to that $23,000, you would be using a $769 per year annual benefit year of service benefit multiplier. So that's how we're doing that. Again, you know, we think it's right, rational, and affordable. And to talk a little bit more, maybe from, if I can, Mr. Mayor, from a volunteer's perspective, if we can invite Pete Hollinger to maybe add some comments to this part of the presentation.
Good evening. Good evening. For those that don't know me, I'm Peter Hollinger, Volunteer out of Station 6. I've got 21 years now volunteering for the Troy Fire Department and eight to 10 years on the Incentive Committee. This plan is really vital to the fire department. And the key to it is, we're not talking, we're talking DBs, retirement numbers, things like that, but it's truly an incentive plan. And the key for us is the attraction of new members, but the more important thing is the retention. Once our people get in and get vested, what we use this plan for is it's difficult for them to walk away. And we need that, because when our guys hit the 12 to 15 year mark, that's when their life begins to change. They started young potentially, now they got families, kids, a different job. Well, we're trying to make it so it's difficult for them to walk away. We want them to stay because we've invested so much time, effort, and now, they have that valuable experience and knowledge that we need to pass along to everybody else to keep it going. So just from the standpoint of somebody who does this day in and day out, I mean, it's still an economical value. It's highly needed. And really, we look at it from the incentive side, I mean, not the retirement side. Thank you.
So what we talked about here is a schedule. And once you come up to what you need to get 769, we talked about how do you do that? And obviously, as Tom and the actuaries, actuaries and I and Mike and Lori and the group looked at all the different costs, and we're going to show you this in just a second, but this is the phased in over a couple of years, a method that we're proposing to consider at least discussion right now, to get to 769 in a couple of years. We didn't come to that conclusion right away after many conversations and looking at the numbers is really, was the driver.
No, June? Okay. So just looking at the proposed schedule that we put together, again, starting this fiscal year of a benefit multiplier of 642 and working to that 769, this is just kind of a schedule to show you what those benefit increases would look like from an annual benefit perspective. And I think, again, the idea is that we're gradually trying to get into that 769 range and what that costs from a benefit perspective.
So here's what it looks like from a macro view from the city. And this is where we spent a lot of time trying to figure out, because, you know, our management team looks at the budget on a regular basis, as you all know, and with you many a times. And, you know, we can all give $1,000 a year multiplier right now. And we know that the fire service deserves it and what they save the city in finances and the level of service they provide. It's well worth it, but it's one thing to want to give a benefit. It's another thing to look at the big picture and try to figure out how do you pay for it. So came up with a few ideas, and Councilmember Teetz actually was part of this at the Troy Story Discussion. You may recall when I get to the bottom where some of the money could come from. But looking at the current benefit and the, with the old mortality tables that Tom was talking about, return on investment is 6.5, which we keep steady, no benefit increase, and so, let's go to 605 is what it was, the cost was 844. This is old news, though. We're just showing you where we started from, because this whole process started a year and a half ago. So we're kind of going through the history. And then, when we adopted the budget for 2015 fiscal year 15, we adopted the 6, you adopted the 642 number as a benefit multiplier, and no changes to the assumptions yet, which was $1,078, which is what is in the budget today.
Yeah.
Okay? So then, when we got, continued to talk about this, we said, let's change the assumptions a bit, choose the 2,000 mortality table Tom talked about, a 1% year of service benefit increase. Doesn't set a floor, doesn't set a ceiling, just as an assumption so that the numbers are reflected. And the rate of return, return on investment is 6.5% at 642, is $1,243,200, just at 642. So then, we said, remember, we have this, we have this schedule here phased in every year. What would that do from an actuarial standpoint with the revised assumptions? It would cost the city $1,268,500, so $1,268,500. So then, I said, and I'm just going to keep this part simple, I won't talk about both of them, but basically, a $2 million transfer from committed and assigned, $1 million from committed fund balance, which is already in there, and then $1 million from unassigned, which would come out of your bottom line unassigned number, to put $2 million to fund, help fund this plan, which is two million dollars to fund, help fund this plan, which is what Councilmember Teetz brought up, allows you to go from one million seventy-five-hundred from an actuarial standpoint to a million ninety-nine-three-oh-six with all the revisions with the phased-in table, which is an increase of the twenty-thousand-eight-oh-six, assuming we take two million dollars, one and one million, and put it into this fund to help fund it. Does that make sense to everyone? So here are the council directives, and this is the opportunity for the discussion. But the first question is, you know, should we adopt the IRS Code Section one fifteen trust for this, for these funds, for the volunteer firefighters? That's the first question.
Do I go by that first? Want to talk about that first?
Let's, yeah.
Council having questions about whether we should adopt one fifteen? Any questions for the administration?
I think it's a great idea. I just have a question, I don't know how it relates to one fifteen overall. We've been focusing on defined contributions versus defined benefit in all of our plans, okay? Section one fifteen doesn't dictate what is defined contribution or defined benefit, correct? It's just a vehicle for providing safety, solve a plan that's approved by the IRS.
To hold the assets.
To hold the assets. Doesn't manifest contribution or define benefit.
You designed it a little bit different than the defined contribution plan, because keep in mind, one of the difficulties here is these are not employees
Right.
of the city, and so it's really more of a deferred compensation. So a defined contribution, we would be putting money away for them as active employees, and they're not active employees, but yes, this doesn't dictate DB or DC, defined benefit or defined contribution. One fifteen is simply a trust vehicle separate from the city to hold the assets.
So it could be a DC.
Or you could, right, well, it wouldn't be, it's different than a defined contrib, they're both trust funds under the Internal Revenue Code, but they have different qualification numbers, that's all. They've got different benefit provisions that apply to them. But you could still move at some point in time into a DC plan arena and make it more of a defined contribution plan, if that's what you want to do. Your current incentive plan, if you were to compare, is more of a defined benefit type structure, right? Upon your retirement, you get a benefit for your life.
Right.
But you could always go, and we had discussions about that, some of the firefighter reps about more of a DC plan model, but this is what.
Mayor, approach, Tom Henderson.
Would the, would the board be required or advised to use Greystone Financial for their investment, or they autonomously just go out and look for another, go through that whole process to find somebody to manage that?
Well, I
And I think I can probably answer that one. Certainly, a lot of work was done to get Greystone, certainly would be recommended. One of the, the last point here, it is mandatory that there be an investment consultant or manager that does work with the retirement board. But again, we could very likely just, you know, if the board decided, they could very likely just join on to the contracts that have already been negotiated.
If not required, they could go outside and start that process all over.
They could, right.
The scale will always help dictate a little bit of that decision-making, right? When you've got two trusts versus one, you get some of the access to some of the managers, I think, that you wouldn't otherwise get. So it's very common that there's very much similarities, but there could be some vehicles because of the size of this initially, that won't be available, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you bring a chair up to the table? We have mic issues and camera issues.
Oh, absolutely.
If you could apologize. Just please join us. Can you start over?
I certainly can. You know, and this is typical, we run into this a lot with when a community sets up a pre-funded retirement healthcare plan, right, which is separate from the retirement, but they have the same boards. And in those instances, it's very typical to recognize some economies of scale by using a lot of the same managers or consultants, because you can strike a better deal, they're already doing some work with you, a lot of the trustees are one in the same. In some instances, however, you will find that there are managers that have minimums that can't be met when you've got something that's of a smaller size. And so there may be instances, although you use, if you decide to use Greystone, they use Greystone, and a lot of the managers are similar, but you might have a few that are different, but certainly that's something that they will consider. And obviously, having the same sort of makeup, similar makeup as the employee's retirement system, will help facilitate those sort of things.
Makes sense. So there's any further questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pennington?
Can you go back to slide eighteen? Question Tom, I have is, and I apologize for walking late, but they talked about the plan being underfunded with the rate of return being set at six and a half percent. So why are we using six and a half percent now in this new plan? Is that a, you know, you're a financial guy, I'm not, is that, it says a conservative rate of return, is that?
Right, it's a very conservative rate of return when you're talking about a trust where you can actually invest under three fourteen. Currently, as Mike mentioned earlier, we're not in a trust, so the funds are subject to PA twenty, which means, for the most part, government bonds, community bonds, you know, I mean, very conservative type things versus what you would do even in your own retirement portfolio, so much in equities, you know, a balanced
Right.
equities, fixed income, to really make that a reality, and that's the whole point, is making that six and a half percent a reality. Now, don't get me wrong, over the long term, you're talking long-term, back in the day, that you could get six and a half percent on some of those investments. We're not seeing that in today's market at all. And so again, this would
That's what I'm saying, those bonds are, they don't give hardly anything, so why are we using six and a half percent?
Well, again, it's over a long period of time, and it's been kind of consistent, and now we're trying to get, you know, where that would make more sense in your regular trust. It's a great question as to why currently we're using a six and a half percent for the plan historically, right? Because one of the reasons that you've seen your contribution rates go up over the years has not just been because the multiplier went up, it's because you haven't met your actuarial expectations, right? You've got people taking lump sums and you're not earning six and a half. So you're underfunding the plan from an actuarial perspective. In moving to the new trust, you will be able to hit that bug. And so going forward on a forward-going basis, and one of the reasons there is the one fifteen trust, is you will now be able to attain a six and a half percent interest rate or better, and that's why it becomes conservative. It, you know, it isn't conservative today with the current structure of the portfolio, but tomorrow, in the future, it will now be a conservative number, because most retirement systems are at a seven, seven and a half, seven and three-quarter, eight percent. Very few are below six percent. Your employee's retirement system is one of the very, very few in the state that has something less than a seven percent. So that's a very conservative number, and it will, once this trust is set up, be a conservative number for this trust.
Okay. It looks like a great plan.
And I think that's why it's so important to really move to the trust, is that if you don't do it, you can't meet six and a half, and you're going to find every year, and I think Councilman Teetz and Councilman Fleming tried to point this out, you're going to keep dumping one million, two million dollars into this fund to make sure that it's fully funded. This is a way that we're not going to have to dump, hopefully, we shouldn't have to dump any more money into the fund for the city, for city funds. So I think it's a no-brainer, it's a no-brainer that we need to go to the trust. Plus, it has good oversight.
I see one more quick question. Is there anything set up for the firefighter that's been there for nine years and, you know, he's forty-nine years, he hasn't been fifty yet, so he's forty-nine, and then, you know, he gets transferred, his wife gets transferred to, you know, Colorado or whatever? Is there anything set up for that guy, or do you have to hit the ten-year mark?
He can be younger, but he has to hit the ten mark to vest.
Okay.
If he's got less than ten years, then he forfeits that what would have otherwise been that benefit accrual in the plan.
Right, okay.
And that's very typical of the firefighter or police officer plans in the state of Michigan is ten-year vesting. It's very typical, so it's not like that's out of the norm here.
Then what happens with that money that would have been contributed to, does that like go into the jungle?
It stays within the plan, because once the monies are there, and it's what's called an actuarial gain to the system, and then helps increase the funded level.
Right. Thanks.
Any other questions? I believe I've heard a consensus to adopt an Internal Revenue Code Section one fifteen trust. So if we can move to, should we adopt the year of service benefit multiplier scale?
And I'm sure the city attorney and Mr. Van Olberbeek will be bringing the necessary documents to the next meeting based on that. So the second issue is the years of service benefit multiplier. Six forty-two was approved in the budget, the others, six eighty-one, seven twenty-four, seven sixty-nine phased in. This is more for conversation based on what the committee has drafted and what the costs are and the impact to the city.
Any questions regarding the multiplier scale, Councilman Campbell?
Let me do the budget. You guys made some estimates for these next two or three years. Are these pretty much in line? I know we talked to six forty-two, but we also looked into sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Right.
These numbers, pretty close.
Well, it's pretty flat at the million seventy-eight-five.
Pretty close.
Which is why we needed to keep this delta as small as possible, right? Because when you're going one year, it's fun to look one year, right, but that's easy. Look at year two and three, like, the city of Troy is historically done with your three-year budget and a rolling five. You need to keep, oops, you need to keep that delta very small to be able to make those out years. And, you know, in Troy, you take a long-term approach financially and viewpoint, and that's why that was key.
Mayor, approach, Tom Henderson.
A question on that slide. The year of service multiplier goes from six oh five, six forty-two, six forty-two, and then six forty-two to seven sixty-nine in one year. We're putting that out to what, twenty, twenty eighteen? So just explain that last column.
That's just, it's just a dash, so six forty-two to say, that's just their way of saying the actuary has taken this into consideration, the scale, the increasing scale.
Right, that's our proposal.
Yeah, so that's our proposal. This is all the same year, just shown different ways.
Okay, okay.
And that's why six forty-two, six forty-two, six forty-two to seven sixty-nine. This is the proposed revised assumptions that have all been talked about, the scale that increases every year for the next couple of years, and then the cost.
Yeah. If I can, it's the budget for the million seventy-eight, that's how we budgeted, right? Next to it is the same year, our fifteen budget, only with the new assumptions. And really, that's just trying to tell you what the new assumptions do with our cost going from a million seventy-eight to the million two forty-three. So it's the same year.
So the million two sixty-eight then reflects what, six forty-two or seven sixty-nine?
The scale going from six forty-two to six eight, you know, through the three, through the proposed fiscal years. That graduated scale, as you've seen on page, yeah, nineteen or sixty. It's all over the place. Six eighty-one, seven twenty-four, that's what we're proposing, the multiplier from a scale version. So, but for, another way of thinking, this column here is just six forty-two, six forty-two, six forty-two, with an understanding that, you know, benefits, there is a year of service benefit increase of one percent. This one is exactly the same as that, although it picks up the sliding scale. So this one says, this is what the cost would be next year, assuming it goes from six forty-two and then the next year to the next number, and then slides right up to seven sixty-nine. So this lets you see the distinction between what six forty-two and a sliding scale does exactly.
So what it should say on top is forty, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Yes, yeah. But it's the same fiscal year as to what happens in that number, because when the actuary projects out into the future, they project where benefits are going to go as well, right, and what that annual cost would be to do that.
So the assumption then is that twenty, fifteen, sixteen, then would be one point two six eight million is what, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Right, that would be every year, right, for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, if that's what our assumption is.
So that number is not going to essentially change?
And that's what, that's what they're all about, right? The actuary, the ARC is, if it lived in a perfect world, that would never change over or at least next thirty years.
But when we make the transfer, it's going to be one million ninety-nine.
Right, and then you see below that, then take
And that would be consistent.
Yes, that would also be consistent.
Any other questions for the administration on the proposals?
Okay, then the last directive is, should we, should you fund the plan with the two million, one from unassigned and one from, is it committed fund balance, or no additional funding, or one and one or the other, or both? That's a lot, but it's basically saying, do you do nothing, one million from committed or two million from both?
Staff's recommendation to
It's two million from both, one from both.
One's already
One is committed
One's committed, one's
To put that in the plan, and then one from unassigned, that's our recommendation.
And we can afford to do that?
Yes.
Questions for staff on that?
Both this year or one this year or one next year? Well, that would be all together.
That'd be our recommendation. But one is going to get it working. Just make it sure we understand, we probably wouldn't fund it with the two million until we get the review letter from the IRS, which could be six months plus. Because we probably won't put
Tender-friendly IRS, you'd do it now?
Yeah.
But not into the fifty
I would say, if you've got the money sitting in the fund, part of the reason we're setting up the trust is to get it into the markets, right, and start moving it in over time. So why leave it sitting over here
Right.
in the general fund, getting, you know, whatever bond rate you're getting, less than one percent, start turn-weighting into the market. So I, you know, I would recommend you transfer that as soon as we get the document set up. And we need to basically start funding the one fifteen trust anyways, because the IRS doesn't, you know, they're funny, they won't rule on hypotheticals, it has to exist, and so you have to have it established in some amount of money in it, so we may as well get it set up. Because it's a one fifteen trust, if for any reason they had issues, you could transfer it right into your existing healthcare vehicle anyways, which is your account, you've got it anyway, so it works out anyway. That'd be my recommendation.
We've got about five minutes left.
Go back to our choices then? So we want number three then? That's what the recommendation is?
That's our recommendation.
Mayor, approach, Tom Henderson.
What if the IRS says no, it's not going to work?
The one fifteen trust doesn't work?
Yeah.
Then I got to go back to the drawing board and create a little bit different way of structure to trust.
You're quite confident it's going to work?
Yeah.
Okay. You've done this.
Not firefighter incentive plans. I mean, I will tell you, we are stepping a little bit out of the box with that, but what's nice is, is a governmental sector employer, right, and a governmental plan, the money in the one fifteen trust can still be utilized for its intended purpose, even if the IRS comes back and says no. And then we're just going to revisit how we want to structure the incentive plan, but I, you know, I'm not concerned on that level.
One of the reasons that we did the graduation is because we've looked at the projections for the next three to five years, and it's best to do it gradually, and it's best to put the two million in there so that we can, you're looking at this in a, maybe in a three-year cycle, is that why we're doing it?
I think you said it best before. I think, you know, we'd love to do everything right now, the problem is, is the way our financial picture has come back together, and I've said this a hundred times, you know, based on the city council and previous administration, not me, it's all the work that's been done. The way it's come back together, it doesn't show huge increases, though you have to flatten or take gradual increases, and try to do a lot of the things you want, and increasing this benefit multiplier is certainly one thing we want to do, but you can't put it all in the kitchen or in the soup all at one time. You have to spread it out to be able to be sustainable. And remember my opening remarks where we wanted this to be affordable and sustainable, and that's why we've done it this way.
And so you met with all of the representatives from each station? All five, six stations? And those reps were supposed to come to the city and be a representative for each station?
Pete is that representative tonight?
And is that, could we just get him to come right back to the table for just a couple seconds? Because I think it's important from the council's standpoint to know that this is also also what the 126 volunteers want also, and
Correct.
we are trying, you know, I think from a council standpoint, we are trying to do something. We want to do it fiscally responsible, but we also want to do something for the fire, the volunteers. So, what I'm hearing is that there was a representative from each station, that represented each station, and they support, the representatives from all stations support this.
Correct. For the last year and a half that we've been meeting, at every single meeting, I think, we've had a member from every station present at the, at our talks, and everybody's had a say in the conversations. Our committee has met outside of these meetings to discuss it as a group. We've taken the information back to our stations to get feedback from each station, and then we bring that back to the following meetings. So, from the committee's standpoint, yes, we've, you know, our initial concerns and issues was stability of the program, which I think the 115 is a great avenue to get that, and then the second goal was obviously to get to the dollar amount we've been trying to get to for years. And now, we've got a sustainable scale that everybody, management, us, have agreed, is a timeframe that is acceptable, and we'll move forward on this.
Great. I think I needed to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Questions for Pete, or staff, or Councilman Holdup?
I think I know the answer to this, goes almost without saying, but I think it's worthy of getting out on the table. We had our bond rating discussion about how to use unassigned funding. This was consistent with what that individual advocated, is it not? Just to confirm-
Mr. Bzinski, air-
Yes.
Yes, that is very true.
So, just for those that are concerned about the bond rating and where we use funds, I just wanted to say out loud, that's always in our minds, I think, I speak for all of us at the table, we, each time we do this, so.
So, do we have consensus for number three at the table? Is that where I'm here?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Other questions? I will open it up to public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening?
Yes, sir.
If you could just give your name. We try, try to limit it to about three minutes, if you will, please.
My name's Richard Beewitt. I've been a city resident for probably 45 years, and also a member of the fire department. I serve on Station 5 with our station chief. I've been there for 45 years. The station level, we had a discussion, we did see the plan, and our members did bring, did bring it to us. They brought it to us August, last Monday. We had a quick discussion on it, we had some suggestions that pertain to the benefits. We wondered why all the numbers weren't included in the benefits. It's kind of hard to get into detail in three minutes, but basically, I did send a letter to all of the council members, and basically, we were just questioning, could the, there's about 10 people in the program that get left out of the benefits as a whole. We didn't know if those benefits could be extended in the same timeframe that you have listed on here. So, it's kind of hard to explain out in three minutes, but that was the concerns from some of the members of my station, and some of the other members in the city that I talked to that weren't really familiar with the plan. At the station level, there's not a whole lot of discussion, we don't see a PowerPoint presentation, and like I said, not a lot of it got brought back and discussed in great detail like it was here. So, that was my only concern, those were my only calls.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, I did talk to Brian this evening, and Brian, I know you took some offense to my letter, but it wasn't personal, and I apologize if that, that's the way it came across, but I was just trying to explain what it's like down at the station level, so, and where we're at, so, that's all I had.
We did get your email, and we do take emails to heart, and it was passed along and discussed.
Okay.
And we are aware of a couple of issues that are on the table at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any of you have questions? My number's on the, on the sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item tonight? Okay. It will be adjourned, and I'll see you at 7:30 in the council chambers.